I'd like to call this special session, Board Meeting, Johnston County, in session. Ms. Jackson, we do have a quorum. All seven board members are present. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Mr. K. Carroll, Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Al Bird. Let us all stand. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, members of the board. Want to, I think we're missing a couple of TVs that are not open, so everybody in the building can see. You're going to do that, Dr. Pierce?
Thank you, Ms. Fur. Members tonight, we want to present to you, to give you some information that will help you reach this decision that you have this evening. I will start with an overview of where we are as far as COVID is in our state, I'm sorry, as where we are as far as COVID in our county. With the first slide we have here is a case map of COVID in the state. You look at Johnston County, we are currently a red county. I believe that that's a high transmission county. Looking at the next slide, can we move that next slide, please? Thank you. It is a little small, you can't really see that. But the most recent data that we received is that Johnston County was nine point, had a 9.1% positive rate, which is the highest that we have been since, I believe, looking at this map here, I believe it's February from this graph. We were 9.7%. It looks like in February. Our peak, of course, was 17.1%. We are now 9.1% versus our state, which is 10.8%. So we have creeped back up in recent weeks. So you see where we are as a county and as a state as far as our percent positive, which has creeped up here recently. And I'm going to ask Dr. Pierce if he will come forth and share some information with us. Recent updates from our toolkit and also our current health guidance.
Ms. Chairman, could I intervene before this information is presented?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to say I appreciate you calling this meeting to provide the data, and I appreciate you meeting with each board member this week on the data. And obviously, we're going to get some more information today. However, I still feel, from last meeting, that this decision needs to be a choice for parents and teachers and staff. You mitigate risk by wearing a mask. But if the option of the parents, they mitigate risk for their children each and every day, as well as our employees. When my daughter got her license, I had to choose whether to let her drive on the road because of all the risk or not. And the way she mitigates that risk is she either wears a seatbelt or she doesn't text. But can I keep her from doing that? No. She could drive without a seatbelt on. She could drive with texting as well. But you mitigate those risks. I take a risk every day when I'm driving on 301. If you drive on 301 between 12 and 6 o'clock at night, there's a big risk that you're going to get hurt. So I still feel, even with the data, that the decision needs to be a choice for our students and staff. And I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we make it optional for students and staff for this coming school year.
So we have a motion and second. Just to clarify, Mr. Wooton, K-12 students and staff have an option to wear a mask. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that also indoors and outdoors?
Both indoors and outdoors.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I clarified that for all of our parents who are listening and in the boardroom tonight. So Mr. Wooton made the motion. Mr. Johnson seconded. At this time, we'll open up for questions and comments. And the first question I have for this board, would you like Dr. Pierce to proceed with some other information or we just take it up amongst ourselves?
I'd like for Dr. Pierce to go ahead and present his information.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that. I think we all have our minds made up regardless of what is done. But yeah, I'm completely okay with that.
The reason I would like for Dr. Pierce to do that is because while we were privileged enough to have this information earlier this week, the public has not been privy to that information. And I feel that we have a responsibility to share the information that was shared with us so that the public will understand why we vote the way we do.
I feel the same way, so share the information.
All right. Chairman Sutton, Dr. Bracy, and Board of Education members, I am sharing today, verbatim, word for word, everything that's in the toolkit. And as you all know, at 3 o'clock today, I don't know if you noticed or not, we got another update that made some adjustments. And so everything that I'm going to share with you is just going to briefly be what was in this toolkit that was updated that will go into effect on July 30. Basically, the current public health guidance that was given in the toolkit was that students benefit from in-person learning and safely returning to in-person instruction in the fall of '21. And that should be our priority is keeping kids in school. Vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID pandemic. And so promoting vaccines is also addressed in there. And then that masks should be worn indoors by all individuals ages two and older who are not fully vaccinated. And then it says consistent and correct mask use by people who are not fully vaccinated is especially imported indoors and in crowded settings when physical distancing cannot be maintained. Additional public health guidance that was given in that document just talked about many school, schools serve students under 12 and that currently they're still not eligible for a vaccine. It's only for 12 and up at this time. It says for those that are not, we should continue to use prevention strategies that are consistent, which, you know, it talked about physical distancing, things of that sort in the toolkit. And then it said that localities should monitor community transmission, vaccine coverage, screening, testing, and occurrence of outbreaks to guide decisions on the level of layer. Now, one of the things I do not address in this PowerPoint, but it talks a lot about in the toolkit, is increased testing, increased testing, increased testing. And so if you go and look in there, you will see those items discussed as well. The summary of the July 21 update, remember, that's the data we had up until 3 o'clock today. Basically, it just added information. So this toolkit's been running now since we started. It just added information on offering and promoting the vaccine. It revised and emphasized the COVID-19 prevention strategies. And most importantly, it promoted vaccines and proper and consistent use of face coverings. It added language on the importance of offering in-person learning, regardless of whether all prevention strategies can be implemented at school. For example, students should not be excluded if you cannot provide physical distancing. If you remember, at one time, that was something we had to go through where we couldn't get enough kids in the room based on the spacing. And in particular, consistent and proper masking should be used. Also, in that summary, it updated and aligned guidance for fully vaccinated people when it comes to contact tracing. It added additional guidance on testing strategies. It added modified quarantine guidance for students after a close contact in which both people were wearing masks. I think that's a big update there of the guidance it gave for us on close contacts in which both people were wearing masks. It removed the reference of Option Plan A, B, and C. There would no longer be a discussion of are we in Plan A, B, or C? And it removed the reference of remote learning as a requirement. So no longer is the school district's requirement to offer remote learning when students are quarantined or out of school due to COVID. It updated to align the guidance, excuse me. Additionally, the following actions were removed, and these actions were removed from the toolkit because there's no longer evidence needed due to the lower rates. So limited nonessential visitors, it removed that. It removed discontinued activities that bring large groups together, such as field trips and assemblies. Keeping students in small groups, it removed that. It removed the need for schools to direct traffic flow. At one time, we had to go down one hall, come up another. It recommended that everyone wear a face covering. Outdoors, keep students' personal items separate, conduct daily symptom screenings, and then force social distancing on transportation. All of those things were removed, and it provided remote learning options for students unable to be at school due to illness or exposure, as we discussed on the prior slide. And the section labeled cloth face coverings, it said all schools should, and it basically, this is an update, this first bullet is today's update. Require all children and staff in schools for K-12. Prior to today, it just said K-8. So the day's update was K-12 to wear a face covering consistently when indoors. Schools K-12 grades should make mask use universally required and require regardless of vaccination status, is what this toolkit says. Given that most of the student population in those grades are not eligible for vaccine. Second bullet's because students cannot mask consistently during mealtime, students should maintain physical distancing of a minimum of three feet to the fullest extent possible. And so that's another wording in this toolkit telling us to do things to the fullest extent possible when actively eating and consider having meals outside when risk of virus transmission is low. Per CDC order, it required staff to wear face coverings on bus, vans, and other group transportation. Ensure that face coverings are worn indoors by all individuals who are not fully vaccinated, including students in grades 9, 12, the workers, teachers, guests, and other adults. And then also, if schools does not require individuals who are fully vaccinated to wear a mask, they should ensure a layer of mitigation strategy, including physical distancing, ventilation, hand hygiene, adequate access to diagnostic and screening testing, and closely monitor the increase of COVID-19 cases. So what we have here is two scenarios. If cloth face coverings are required, this is the scenario that they give and how we have to respond as a school district. So in the event, if cloth face coverings are required and there was a positive on campus that the local health department confirms, remember, once again, school system cannot confirm or quarantine students or staff. It's only done by the local health department. The close contacts do not have to quarantine if they are fully vaccinated or have had COVID in the last three months, is what the toolkit says. If face coverings are properly and consistently being worn by both the person with COVID and the potentially exposed person, then close contacts do not need to quarantine. So in a class of 20 students, there was a positive, everyone was wearing a face covering, only the positive would have to quarantine based on the guidance that it gives in this document. Students who are quarantined will be given work to complete while out of school, but virtual and remote learning will not be offered in this upcoming school year. And staff are deemed close contacts will need to quarantine for 10 days unless they are fully vaccinated or have had COVID in the last three months. The mask will not exclude staff from being quarantined under any circumstance. So as we kids, where everyone's masked, they don't have, they can't be deemed a close contact, the toolkit says that that does not apply to our staff in the building. So in the scenario, if face coverings are optional, same situation, someone's positive. The close contact tracing then goes to anyone within six feet for 15 minutes cumulative. Over a 24-hour period would be deemed a close contact and had to quarantine for 10 days. You are not exempt from being deemed a close contact unless the positive person and the close contact both were wearing a mask, okay? So 20, class of 20 again, let's say the exposed did not wear a mask. The rule would then go into place to anyone that was within six feet for 15 minutes or longer, is what the health department would use, or if the person was vaccinated or had COVID in the last three months. Students would be quarantined, just like we talked about before, out of school, and there would be no virtual remote learning. And the same thing with staff. They're deemed a close contact. Doesn't matter if they had on mask or not, only a vaccination or having COVID in the last three months would keep them from being deemed a close contact. Currently, the way we plan to go to school, and this is what we've already put out at the end of June to our staff, is that schools will be five days a week in the '21-'22 school year. Schools will return to pre-COVID routines and events. Events should be planned to allow for physical distancing as much as possible. So that means we'll have orientations. We'll have assemblies, field trips, staff meetings. Schools will return to that. And students may eat in the cafeteria, as we saw before. Visitors and volunteers are allowed in schools, as you saw was noticed in the toolkit. Parents wanting their child to remain virtual should apply to the Johnston County Schools Virtual Academy. Our traditional sites will not offer that Virtual Academy model. It will only be through our Virtual Academy that we have with Johnston County Schools. Transportation will resume as normal. And athletics, extracurricular, and co-curricular activities must follow the guidance of the High School Athletic Association and the public school unit where they participate or compete. And I want to reemphasize this. Surrounding counties trump whatever we decide when we go and compete or play in their counties. Okay? So whatever we decide does not carry over to another LEA or public school unit. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. King.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Bracy just asked me to speak with you all about some potential concerns, considerations from the perspective of the instructional side of the House. And I would really frame those concerns around two particular areas of concerns. The first one, and really the most critical one, is the realization that in the scenario that students are not masked next year, there is the absolute potential for significant numbers of student and staff absences. And I'll talk a little bit later about negative impacts of teacher absences and negative impact of student absences. In addition to that, the reality is such that we will likely have, one of the things that will happen as a result of those significant numbers of teacher absences is that CIA staff and other staff members will likely have their work redirected so that they can serve as teacher assistants rather than doing the jobs that they are allowed to do. And then finally, inability to create sufficient learning momentum desperately needed based on COVID loss that already is in existence. Just a few things to think about as it relates to teacher absences. We know the research is very clear that the quality of classroom instruction suffers when teachers are outside of the classroom. And so it becomes necessary for us to make every effort we can to ensure that teachers are able to be in classrooms as much as they are possible. It's very clear that when a teacher is absent from the classroom, student learning is disrupted. And the more often teachers are out of a classroom, the less likely our students are to perform well instructionally and particularly on standardized tests. Negative impact of student absences. We know, many of you have probably heard the concept of a chronic absenteeism, right? And that generally refers to students who've been absent from school for 10%, of a school year. That would be, in most instances, about 15 days. Well, based on what you just heard from Dr. Pierce, what is laid out and required of us in terms of the toolkit, a student who is required to go out of school and quarantined under the scenario as is set up would be at 10 to 14 days of absence. If that student needed to be absent, even an additional day, that would place that student in the range of being chronically absent. And God forbid a student find himself in a scenario where he or she has been quarantined more than once. That would place them beyond the level of quarantine, excuse me, the level of chronic absenteeism. And then what I think is most critical to understand is that the research is clear that this issue of absences and the critical nature of absences is most acute for those students who are in kindergarten and pre-kindergarten. And the research is clear that excessive absences for those kids tends to result in those students having lower reading scores, lower reading ability, and higher rates of grade retention. Final thing I want to talk about is just the reality that we start this year off, frankly, in the face of the reality that we are already dealing with significant levels of learning loss due to COVID. As you see on this document, this document reflects JCPS MAP growth data. Note that the bar represents our students' achievement. The diamond above each bar represents where we would have expected our students to perform had they have, had they been able to have a more regular and consistent school year last year. So we make that point to make the case that we already start the year behind. It's going to be critical for us this year if we have any chance of making significant headway in terms of addressing learning loss, that we are able to have a consistent school year where we are able to build academic momentum for our students and support them through the learning that needs to take place.
Thank you, Dr. King. Just one last slide, members of the board. We just finished watching the governor's most recent news conference. And what he has recently, what he said as of today, that all schools should require all children and staff in schools to wear face covering consistently when indoors. Of course, we all know the mandate expires, I believe, tomorrow. But this is his recommendation, which falls right in line with the most recent CDC guidance.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce, Dr. King, and Dr. Bracy for providing the information. And, you know, I just want to say one thing is that I respect the parents that feel the need to keep their kids safe by continuing to wear a mask just as much as I respect the parents that feel that they should have a choice in what their child, you know, it feels safe. There's a lot of kids that have asthma and other medical conditions that makes it very hard for them to wear a mask. And we need to be just as considerate about those individuals as we are about the individuals unvaccinated. The ABC Collaborative Group, you know, provided us a lot of information earlier this year. And, you know, so from a standpoint of that, from their research and data, kids are not really super-spreaders. And so, you know, taking everything into consideration, since the governor has released that we not have to wear a mask everywhere we go, you know, I physically have monitored who's wearing masks and who's not in the grocery stores, Lowe's, obviously church camps, obviously daycares. Daycares have never had to wear a mask since day one of COVID. And so I have a hard time tonight not giving the parents choice of what they do, what they feel is safest for their kid. I just hope that our parents understand the parameters that this provides and has to, we have to abide by. There's no virtual, there's no remote, excuse me. And basically, it could cause major absences, as Dr. King talked about. However, I would let the parents make that choice and not me as a school board member. So I respect everybody on this board that has to make this decision. And I respect the majority of whatever it may be. But I just wanted to tell you what my thoughts were, and I appreciate every one of you. This has been a hard decision. We've all received many, many, many emails. And unfortunately, we can't respond to all of them. But I appreciate the parents voicing their opinion, either way, if it's for masks or not. I appreciate that. And so I'll just turn it over for any other questions or comments on the board.
Well, I want to say, first of all, I want to thank all of our parents who, and staff members, who have reached out to us. It's obvious that we are a county that deeply cares about our children. There is no doubt about that. I've read every single email. I haven't responded to everyone because there have just been too many. But, you know, I have no doubt that our parents care about their kids. And they believe they know what is best. Many made good points on both sides of the argument. And I've carefully considered each of those. And I'm saying this because I want you to know that the time that you spent sending that did not go unnoticed, and I appreciate your advocacy. Many want choice, but there's also a lot that want mandatory masking. Our county is split, just like our state is and our nation. I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm talking. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please let us speak, and you guys hold it to a minimum. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, because I gave you the courtesy of reading your emails. I'd like for you to give me the courtesy of making my statement, whether you agree with it or not. Okay? We talk an awful lot about freedom in our country, but it seems like the only freedom we want is the freedom we want. And we forget about the freedom that other people have the right to experience as well. I'm going to say that we, and I have great respect for each of these board members sitting at this table. We don't always agree, and we're not going to agree tonight. But I hope that we can demonstrate that you can agree to disagree and move forward. And that's something that our country has lost sight of. Our country has gotten to the place where we feel like that it's fine, it is okay to be rude and to push our beliefs on other people. That is not what America is. America is about respecting the right for other people to have differing opinions. And I hope when you walk out of here, you will model that for your children. Because I believe you care, but it is not enough to care. You've got to model what you expect from your children. And if we don't model that, what we enjoy as liberty and freedom in this country is going to greatly spiral out. Now, I have read vetted and credible reports. I want you to understand, I come from a family of healthcare providers. So I have access to the AMA journals. I have access to not just what you see in the news on the CDC. When I talk about healthcare providers, I have doctors, I have nurses, I have clinical research specialists in my family. I have medical statisticians. And so I have spent my time on this, not just on my knees in prayer, but studying what is best for our children and what is best for our community. I would also say that I truly believe that each of my fellow board members have done as much as they can to research this. What I have learned is that, number one, this mask that I wear doesn't protect me. It protects the people around me. And that is the crux of this whole issue. As a school board member, I was elected to provide a safe, learning environment, and I emphasize learning. And when I look at the learning loss at those charts, that concerns me. When I look at what research says about reading, yes, we will have children, if we go unmasked or if we give choice, who will be quarantined multiple times. And as a retired primary school teacher, I don't know how you teach a child to read with a learning packet. So those are my concerns about giving choice. I would love to have choice about how fast I can drive on the highway because I don't agree with the speed limits. But I try to obey them, not because it's the law and I don't want a ticket, but because I don't want to create a danger for the people around me. And that's where I think we have missed the boat as a nation, is that we have stopped thinking about how our choices impact the people around us. We have a duty and an obligation to provide our children with a quality education and a safe environment. But we also have a duty to protect our employees. We have many children and many employees who are immune compromised. No, Mr. Sutton is absolutely correct. There's very little transmission among children. But that theory is being tested because our health director has told us that there are now multiple clusters in our daycares and our church camps here in Johnston County. That's what the data tells us. And that's not the data that I read on Facebook. That's the data that is provided by our local health director. Now, some of you are sitting there thinking, well, I'm certainly not going to vote for her again. And that is your prerogative. But I'm not going to give you that opportunity because I said many times throughout my campaign, and my fellow board members have heard me say this, I'm not running again. So I can make...
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize, but we can't have that. Thank you.
So I come to this table, and I make decisions based on what I believe is best, not what I believe a group of parents wants me to do. And unfortunately, you're stuck with me about 14 more months. So I would suggest, when you, most of you were very respectful in your emails. But let me tell you what happens when you're not. Yes, you have the right to be heard, but I do not and will not respond to you if you are rude or threatening. Because when you start threatening me, I don't take that well. And when you start threatening me, you've lost me as your ally. So I want to make my case here now for the fact that whatever this vote does, I will walk out and I will support. Because whatever the majority of this board does, we are a corporate body, and I will walk out of here and I will support it. And I'm asking you as the citizens and parents of these children to do the same thing. Because you really don't have a choice in that. Mr. Sutton, I believe I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Sessom.
Oh, Mr. Carroll, isn't it odd you and I are the well-behaved ones today?
I learned my lesson at the last board meeting.
In all seriousness, Mr. Chairman, we got a motion and a second. I called a question before the debate ended.
... teachers that are vaccinated do not have to quarantine?
Teachers that are vaccinated would not have to quarantine.
I just, my best information for me. I didn't have...
If they were in close contact, if they're positive, they would have to quarantine.
Yeah, yeah.
No, sir. They have symptoms, or if they are, so if you are in contact with a positive and you have symptoms, but if you're already vaccinated, no, you would not unless you had symptoms.
I'm just thinking about the teacher, teacher absence. I just wanted to ask that question.
Okay, Mr. Johnson has called a question. So at this time, we'll go to a vote. At this time, we're going to do a bit different. We're going to get all in favor of giving parents' choice, shown by a raise of hands at this time. All in favor of no? Motion carries four to three. Dr. King?
Thank you, Board members. Board members, a few months ago, we came to you and asked for funding to provide high school intervention materials. We talked about having done the required bidding process and identified an HMH product, Math 180. We asked for the board to approve that item in the amount of $760,000. We come tonight asking for some additional dollars. It appears that there was a miscalculation in terms of the number of students who would benefit from this program, and it is necessary for us to add an additional $71,000 worth of Math 180 materials in order to provide for all of our students. As you note on the board item, I have asked for authorization to spend up to an additional $80,000, and that is so that I won't have to come before you and ask you to increase that amount again. You're voting, right, up to $80,000 additional dollars.
I move that we accept that proposal.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sessom, second by Mr. Wooton. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. All oppose, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Dr. King. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Wooton. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We adjourn.